Two, one. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners, City of Bowling Green, Kentucky. Regular meeting, City Hall, November 16th, 2021, 4:30. We are going to start out with Mr. Bailey, and he's going to introduce a few guests, and then lead us in Pledge of Allegiance.
Hello, everyone. I have Reverend Ashin, Reverend Kantobasa. He's the Buddhist Reverend at the Buddhist International Temple. He's going to give the invocation today, and I appreciate Leta, who works with the city, for arranging this. So if you can, just give a brief invocation, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
... Andre Kinschenbi. The Binyari, Dajian, Nala Musaradri. Yenkambi. Bowling Green Mio. Si Bin Daya Yi. Long Jiao Yi. Ba Bao Zong. Do Da Yi. Mi Yu Du. Mi Yu Da. Bao Do. Laye De Bi Ne. Ni 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 Ni. Bu Zang. Bu Bao Bido. Lo Sa Nain Ya Ba. Si Gon Da Ri. To Do. Yasua Be Ya. Ho Do. Mu Ge De. Pray Di Ya Do. Do Gu. Level. Ne Se. Ne Se. Jun Gu Ga. Mi Da Bu Da. Ba Ri. Mi Du. Mi Da. Alon Do. An Ni Niya. Ami E Ra. Mi Da Bu Da. Bido. Alon Level. Mi Mi Do Ya. Yi. Do Juan Jie Mu. Su Bao San. Yue. Chen Dui Guo. Che Kam Bi Do. Bowling Green Mio. Go. Ken De Ki Bi Ne. Me Di Ka Bi Na. Do Lu. Mi Bao Zong. Nu Bi Niya. Bao Zong. Ba Da. Mi. Bao Zong. Sa De Lu. Bi O Zi Ya. Alabari. Bao Zi Bi Do. Amadantaya. Alabari. Mi Yi Pi La Ba. Zi. Lo. Alon Da. Won Gu Zi. Ne. Ya Ni Ma Ma. Tan Chan Ya Da Da. Ne. Song Yue. Na Im Ma Zi. Jiang. Su Mo. Da La. Ba Ri. Alon Wu. Ji Su De. Ma Ri. Alon. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I really appreciate you coming here, and thank you so much. And... Oh, and Jerry is going to... Jimmy's going to give the translation.
First of all, I would like to introduce myself. My name is Jimmy Yun. I am one of the leaders of Barmis Community in Bowling Green. And today, I'm honored to have a chance to translate what the monk has, you see, given his Simon. Blessed by the Reverend Ashin Kantobasa, the presiding monk from the Buddhist International Temple, known in Barmis as Willu Myintoya Monastery, Bowling Green, on the occasion of the meeting for the new mayor and commissioners on Tuesday, November 16th, 4:30 p.m. at the City Hall, Bowling Green, KY 42101. Dear Mayor Tot Alcott, Commissioner Bailey, Commissioner Brayley Brown, Commissioner Perry Jin, and Commissioner Hill. First of all, I would like to extend my thanks and appreciation to you all for your invitation, to give you all my blessing in line with the Buddhist faith. Starting from now, may Lord Buddha, the Buddha scriptures, and Buddhist monk bring good health, happiness, protection for your safety, peace, and satisfaction with undominating strength and endeavor in carrying out your noble responsibility for peace, security, development, and progress of the Bowling Green City and residents until the end of your blessed tenure. I also ask Lord Buddha for his special blessing for all working staff of the Bowling Green City Administration, Concerned Agency, and of course, people of the city in pooling and extending their potentials for shaping a beautiful, vibrant, cosmopolitan city in the state of Kentucky, the USA. Thank you very much. Delivered by Reverend Ashin Kantobasa. Translated in talk in English by Jimmy Yun. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys, for being here. I would ask everyone to turn to the flag as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Commissioner Bailey. At this time, Mrs. Jackson, will you please have our roll call?
Commissioner Beasley Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Perigin?
Here.
Commissioner Bailey?
Here.
Mayor Alcott?
Here.
Mr. Mizel, do you have any comments before we start the meeting?
I have just a couple of recommendations, sorry, Mayor, that I'd like to make. First of all, the Bowling Green Fire Department submitted its annual compliance report for accreditation. This is a requirement annually to achieve the five-year accreditation, and the conclusion was that the Bowling Green Fire Department has demonstrated that it is in compliance with all stated standards and core competencies. The agency is in compliance with the most current version of the FESSAM, and it says our recommendations were that they recommend that the Commission on Fire Accreditation International accept the Bowling Green Fire Department annual compliance report, and that the agency retain their accredited agency status. So we are in good shape. This is year three. I think in two more years, they'll go back for the full-blown accreditation process, but a good report card for the fire department. Second of all, the Finance Department received the distinguished budget presentation award from GFOA again. This is the 10th year in a row that we got an award for the budget presentation, and I'd like to thank Katie Schaller Ward for her leadership, and as well as Erin Ballou, our Assistant CFO, for all the work she does on our budget packet, and all the other hands that are involved with that document that we submit to GFOA. But this is, again, the 10th time we've gotten this, 10th in a row, for the budget award, and we get a little certificate, and this will go in next year's budget document for them to see. So I just want to congratulate Fire and Finance for those two recent awards. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. One more thing, Mayor, if I may. There'll be a need for closed session. Ashley will read the reason.
Pursuant to KRS 618101(c), for discussions of proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Congratulations to our fire department. Mrs. Schaller Ward, 10 years in a row. Wow. We are proud of you and your team, and what you've accomplished, and what you continue to accomplish. Thank you very much. All right. Our first agenda item this evening is our approval of our minutes for the regular meeting, November 2nd, 2021.
So moved.
Right.
Second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. No discussion at this time. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Municipal Order Number 2021-195.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Stephen Epley to the position of IT Manager in the Information Technology Department.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. We have roughly four personnel actions tonight before you. The first one here is a promotion. This is in IT. As you know, recently, we promoted Danita Weeks to IT Director, which opened up an IT Manager position, and I'd like for Danita to come forward and make her recommendation for promotion to the IT Manager slot. Danita?
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for this opportunity to strengthen the leadership of our IT team. I am honored to come before you, recommending Stephen Epley's promotion to the position of IT Manager. If Stephen would stand? Stephen has numerous technical certifications, and he has the telecommunications, the networking, the security, the customer service, and the management skill set that we need in the IT department. Stephen has had an unprecedented, but very well-deserved rise to the top. He started with the city only two years ago as a Systems Analyst. Within eight months, he has moved to System Engineer, and has shown a remarkable work ethic that has earned him the respect and the praise of all city departments. He is dedicated to his family, his beautiful daughters, and the youth of Warren County. He has been an archery head coach. He has volunteered at the Boys and Girls Club of Bowling Green, and he is more passionate about youth softball than any person I've ever met. He also volunteers at the Bowling Green Warren County Humane Society, where his wife works, and he is working on his CIT degree at WKU. His initiative, his positive attitude, and his managerial experience gives me all the confidence in the world that he is ready to take this new leadership role. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Danita. Question? All right. Let's make this official. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Congratulations to...
Congratulations.
Municipal Order Number 2021-197.
Municipal Order approving the career path advancement of Ryan Denbo to the position of Operations Technician 2 in the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry, I realize I said 187. I meant 196. Thank you. That was moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel?
We have an opening in Public Works Operations. Thank you for your addition of the one OMT position in this year's budget. That, along with the promotion, created this opportunity here, and I'd like for Greg Meredith to step up and make his recommendation for promotion to the OMT 2 position. Greg?
Good afternoon. Thank you. It's my pleasure to be here today to recommend the promotion of Ryan Denbo to the position of Operations Maintenance Technician 2, or OMT 2 for short, in our Operations Division. Again, Jeff mentioned that this was due to our recent promotion, as well as a couple of added OMT 2 positions in this year's budget. The path for promotion for this position is set forth in our Career Path Program for the Operations Division. In order to be promoted to OMT 2, Ryan had to pass all the job tasks that were required for OMT 1, as well as all the mandatory tasks for the OMT 2 position, have no pending disciplinary actions, and be recommended for advancement by his leadership team within Operations. Ryan began his career with the city in December of 2020 as a Laborer 2. He obtained his CDL quickly in February of 2021. His leadership skills, dedication to duty, have shown him to be highly regarded by his supervisory chain of command. In terms of training, Ryan has completed his courses for Work Zone Traffic, Flagger, as well as Certified Pesticide Application Training. He will soon be enrolled in the University of Kentucky's ROAD Scholar Program, and that's R-O-A-D Scholar Program. Additionally, he's volunteered to be on the on-call list for our after-hours response to emergencies, duties often assigned to employees with a lot more seniority than he does. So we're excited about Ryan, about the continued growth that he's shown in our Operation Division, and his future leadership within Operations, and I'd be glad to take any questions you have.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Meredith. Let's make roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Congratulations to Mr. Denbo. Municipal Order Number 2021-197.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Mitchell Saltzman to the position of Parks Facility Maintainer 2 in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. Mr. Mizel?
As you know, we trade back and forth between departments. This vacancy was created by a transfer over to Operations and Public Works, so Greg steals from Brent, Brent steals from Greg. I don't want to call it stealing, but borrowing, I guess, but this is a promotion opportunity that I'd like for Brent Belcher to come up and introduce to you. Brent?
Evening, Mayor Commissioners. Thank you, City Manager Mizel. Tonight, I come to you, the exciting part, obviously, the opening was because somebody got a transfer over to Public Works, and they continue their career path, but this is an opportunity for Mitchell Saltzman then to follow in as a promotion for Parks Facility Maintainer 2. He's been a Maintainer 1 with us since 2018. He was actually hired as a part-timer in 2017. Came to us as a military veteran prior to that, so this is a highly skilled individual, came to us with a lot of experience. He's been, I put it, outperforming his role for a long time, and I'm proud of the fact that he's going to be able to expand that role now with us further. He's going to be stationed at Lampkin Park. For those of you that are familiar with some of the updates we've done at Lampkin Park, with the spray ground, a turf field, new playgrounds, new shelters, and Mitchell is right in line with that. He's got some great ideas. I'm excited about some of the energy he's going to bring to us and the community, specifically at that park, and looking forward to him starting and making a difference for our community. So thank you very much, and appreciate the consideration.
Thank you, Brent. Any questions? All right. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Congratulations to Mr. Saltzman. Municipal Order Number 2021-198.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Maurice Morrison to the position of Office Associate in the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel?
This position of Office Associate in the Fleet Division was created by the promotion of Mrs. Denise Gillan, who's with us tonight, and so to fill her spot, we went out and looked, and we think we've got the right gentleman, and I'd like to ask Erin Holes, the HR Director, to come up and tell you about the process, and who our recommendation is. Thank you, Erin.
All right. Good afternoon. We do have an opening for the Fleet Office Associate position. Very important person to this department, as our new manager, Denise, can tell you. We advertised for this position both internally and externally. We had an overwhelming 69 people apply for this position, so pretty awesome to have that much interest of people working for the city, and over 50% of those did respond and do the computer skills-based assessment, and six were selected for the interview. We've selected Maurice Morrison. Maurice, if you could stand, please. He has served in the U.S. Army for 12 years with the 82nd Airborne Division. He was employed following, leaving the Army with the United States Postal Service until this last May, is currently with the Dollar General Distribution Center. He brings a variety of skills to the Fleet Department, which is going to be a great asset to their operation. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Erin. Questions? None at this time? Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Congratulations, Maurice. Municipal Order Number 2021-199.
Municipal Order approving the appointment of Phyllis Anderson to the Human Rights Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. I have made this nomination of Ms. Phyllis Anderson. Like to give you just a little bit of background. She is a member of Mount Zion Baptist Church. She is, she considers herself, and I think many of the basketball players in the Western Kentucky basketball team, consider her the unofficial mom. You may know her son, Josh Anderson. Quite a player. He's returned for his fifth year this year. We are very glad that he has shown that eligibility. Mrs. Anderson works for Haltschens Industry Corporate Office, and she has a heart for hurting the... I'm sorry. She has a heart for not hurting the hurt or the broken, and she wants to continue to serve in her community, and she is the mom of Josh and Simpson, another son that is almost semi-pro basketball player, and grandmother to grandson Skylar. So I don't believe she's here tonight, but I would like, if there's any questions, I will be happy to take that. Okay? No questions? Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Municipal Order Number 2021-200.
Municipal Order approving the reappointment of Gary Counts and appointment of Tracy Mosley to the Contractors Licensing Board.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. This has also come to my attention. We have, right now, Gary Counts has been serving the board admirably, and he would like to continue his service, and has offered to be reappointed, and I agree with that. There was a step down from Charles Mosley on the licensing board, and Tracy Mosley, which is very familiar to Charles because is his wife, and so she is a graduate from Western Kentucky University. She has a lot of hospitality in her background. She's also was Van Meter Insurance, and she is an owner with her husband for M&amp;L Electrical, Inc., and so she would like to continue to serve. She understands the importance of this licensing, or the Contractors Board, and has offered to serve our community. And she's not here, but I could take questions at this time.
I think it's his daughter.
Daughter?
Yeah. Yeah. Because I know her. I served on that board, and we honored Charles Mosley last week, I think it was. I think he served like 38 years, some astronomical amount, our community on the Contractors Licensing Board, which is a very important role to keep things being built, but things being built with integrity, and the citizens, you know, safe from people trying to take advantage of them. So, great family.
Thank you, Sue. Appreciate that correction.
No.
All right. No further questions? Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Municipal Order Number 2021-201.
Municipal Order authorizing software subscription services from Tyler Technologies, Inc., in the amount of $127,506.16 for fiscal year 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel?
We rely heavily on technology here with the city, and as you know, we can't live without it these days, so roughly a million dollars or so of our budget goes toward software maintenance, and this is just one of those, and this is a critical one. This one serves our finance, payroll, human resources, and community development, procurement management, and our, what we call our E-suite models. It's a critical piece of software that we, a lot of people use, and we use it every day. Danita Weeks, our IT Director, went and negotiated price renewal with Tyler Technologies, and that cost, started out at $139,000. Danita went to work and tried to whittle this down. We, I think, eliminated a few things that we could live without, and we have a price now of $127,506 before you tonight. We'd ask for your approval to renew and approve this annual maintenance contract with Tyler Technologies. Danita's here, can answer any of your questions about this.
Thank you for whittling that down. No further questions? Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Municipal Order Number 2021-202.
Municipal Order authorizing the submission of an application for Kentucky Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Housing Funding to the Kentucky Department for Local Government in an amount up to $1 million.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel?
So the NCS Department would like to apply for this Kentucky CDBG COVID grant, up to $1 million. This requires no match, which is excellent. DLG received the Kentucky CDBG CB funds through the CARES Act. This is basically leftover money from CARES Act distribution that the Kentucky CDBG office had. They reached out, or they're going to reach out to any entitlement community such as Bowling Green, and so we were fortunate to get a call, and we would like to apply for this, and our plans are that we would partner with Live the Dream Development to use these grant funds to build four to five new duplexes, resulting in eight to 10 new affordable housing units for low-income households in Bowling Green. So the duplexes will be built on lots by Live the Dream. Mr. Williams is here with us tonight, and he is willing to also add $300,000 of private financing towards this project for a total of $1,003,000. Mr. Williams had the land available to put these on, and we'll be probably coming back to you with an agreement on that at a future date, but tonight, we would like your permission to go after and hopefully accept this $1 million to be used for affordable housing. Brent Childers and Nick Cook are here, worked on this, and can answer any questions you have.
I'd just like to express, Nick, thank you so much for leaning forward. You know, we, you know, you have ears to the ground, and it's those that act quick to get the response, and you continue to deliver. I had the opportunity of going out in Dishman Lane and seeing Live the Dream, and, you know, affordable housing is one thing, but quality housing is really what's happening on the west end of town, and so I admire the work that's going on there at Abraham, and you and your team, and continue to deliver, and I hope we can get and seek this grant, so...
And I want to echo that. I know that having, Nick, I've said this before, you're killing it. Man, I wish if I had a grant writer, I'm going to come to you. But it takes a team, and I know it takes a team for a lot of people to try to bring affordable housing here, and I know it's starting out at eight to 10, but at least it's a start, and at least we can move forward, and hopefully, we can move forward from even there. I appreciate, you know, Mr. Williams, Katie, you know, you guys being here to try to improve, you know, things that you've already started, you know, long before, for now. So I appreciate everybody that's on that team that's been doing these type of things for a very long time.
You know, I'm wondering if we can... Abraham knows how I feel about his organization. It's amazing what he accomplishes, and grants are so important, but I'm wondering if somebody can... I think you mentioned Abraham, you had an architectural rendering, but how big are these, and how many bedrooms, and how many families? And I just want to let the public know how important this project is.
It's shocking that you lost for words right now.
That's called delegating, and he does it good.
I have to be nice. So they're going to be two-bedroom, one bath, about 890 square feet. It's very similar to what we built at Fort Webb. Phase two, when you drive in, the ones on the right are the two bedrooms, so that's what it will be. the ones on the right are the two bedrooms, so that's what it will be. We're using the same floor plan.
Okay, okay, that's great. And there's 10 million dollars?
There's nine. Right now, we have it laid out for nine. There's three duplexes and one that's going to be a triplex.
Okay. Nine families, that'll be positively affected.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Katie. Roll call.
Eastley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-203.
Municipal Order approving fiscal year 2022 sidewalk project locations, including design and survey, and authorizing the City Law Department to negotiate the purchase of properties necessary for these projects, and further authorizing appropriate city officials to execute deeds, easements, and other documents related to land purchases necessary for the projects.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
Back in June, you all approved our FY22 annual budget. Part of that budget was an allocation appropriation for new sidewalks. Before you tonight is the plan where that money is going to be put on the ground, and Ms., sorry, Mr. Kyle Hunt wrote a good memo here explaining what locations we're going. Morgantown Road, from Loop, Loop Street to Old Morgantown Road, 1,207 square feet, linear feet of sidewalk. Creekwood Avenue, Russell Road to Spring Creek Avenue, 1,527 linear feet. Rhodes Drive, we would go from Ridgecrest Way to Loving Way, another 1,546 feet, and then on Riverwood Avenue, we would go from Fairview Avenue down to 31W Bypass for a little over 1,000 feet, and then on Rockingham Lane, we would go from Karen to the Bowling Green High School South entrance, roughly 486 feet, for a total of 5,777 feet of sidewalk. There was one more project that was looked at on Euclid Avenue, but the neighbors did not want the project, and so we pulled back on that one, but this is to give us the approval to proceed with surveying, design, and property acquisition for our FY22 sidewalk program. And Greg Meredith is still here, I think, to answering your questions on this, as well as Melissa, counselor in the back with Ms. Katie.
I don't have a question, but I want to, I want to say something about our Public Works Department, Melissa, Greg, leadership. Everybody's responsive, all of our senior leadership, I don't want to say that, but I'm going to pick on them guys a little bit because they respond immediately, they respond to the citizens, they also respond to the elected officials, and that is just a blessing, that, you know, folks can get their input, they bring it to us, and we push it out to you guys, and immediately they look at the, at the idea and assess it, and then implement it when appropriate. So thank you so much for being such a responsive public leader.
And one, one, one other comment I should have made. This, this is as scientific as we can make it on choosing which sidewalks are of the highest priority based on connectivity, based on proximity to schools, parks. Greg can elaborate on that, but it is not just close your eyes and point to one on the map. It's, it's a scientific process on, on what's needed out there and what's higher priority, and every year, things move up on the list, and Greg does a great job with that, as well as Melissa, so just want to make that clear.
And I want to ditto what Commissioner Perrigen said, because all I've ever had, like, if I ever had a question, I've always had, like, the respect where I could call, even if it's at late at night, and I'll send a text, and then I'll be like, hey, I apologize, it's on Sunday, and I appreciate you guys doing this and stuff, especially even explaining to someone who's new, you know, just the ins and the outs of, like, just the layout of the land. So I do ditto, like, everything that you guys are doing, the work hard at what you're doing.
I also want to say thanks. That is my same experience. You all are amazing, so thank you for being such great public servants for our community. I was wondering if you all could explain for the citizens who live in these neighborhoods, I'm so excited that we're continuing to invest in our neighborhoods and making them safer places where people can walk and be active, kids can ride their bikes. So if you could just explain, because I know when I first read it, it was kind of confusing about which, even though it says left or right, it's, well, which left or right depending on where you're coming from. So if you could explain which side of the road for each of these sets that they can expect, and maybe describe the, you know, where it's connecting.
Kind of a trick, isn't it? Just kidding. If you, if you read the name of the street and the direction from and to, so if you're going from and to that location, left or right would be which side of the road it's on, if that makes sense. So like, the first one, Morgantown Road, it's on the left from Loop Drive to Old Morgantown Road, which is past the fire station, so it's on the left side. That's, that's kind of how we do it, so.
Can you, for the Rhodes Drive location, talk about in terms of where it's coming from, from the roundabout, and then connecting to Ridgecrest?
So from the roundabout is actually a section we did this year. It's Loving Way, which if you're going from the roundabout to Rhodes would be on the right side. The way this is listed, though, from Rhodes, is going from Ridgecrest toward Loving, so it's on the left side. It's on the side closest toward Nashville Road from Rhodes.
And then for those who go to Bowling Green High, this is exciting that we're going to make it safer for students walking to and from the school, so can you talk a little bit about where that new sidewalk is going to be?
That small piece is from, actually, the Eastland Park area, so it's from Karen. It'll be on the left side, on the same side as the high school, kind of where the, where the football stadium is and the baseball stadium is. So it goes to that first drive before you go down in the drainage easement, so it's just a connection, really, this piece, this small piece, connects from Eastland to the high school. It'll make it a lot of you, I've seen kids, just recently, I saw kids walking in the, in the curve there, and that's a really sharp curve, so that's where that is.
I'm super excited making that safer for those students, because they are every afternoon walking in that ditch, and I'm super excited about this, the one on Riverwood. I know they've been waiting for years and years and years and years, and so if you could explain to our citizens where this little street is, because they may know it, they may use it as a cut-through, but may not recognize the name, but this is, I think, a really exciting sidewalk that's really going to help connectivity in that area.
So it basically goes from Kroger to the bypass. It would be, Riverwood is on the right side from Fairview, so it's on the side away from the bypass. It runs parallel, and it goes to Kroger from Cemetery Road from Fairview Avenue. So, yeah, there's a lot of traffic that comes from Kroger, kind of cuts around through, goes out an alley, and hits Cemetery Road by the cemetery, so, yeah.
And so it's going to be on the same side as those townhomes and things like that?
Yes.
Right, okay. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Meredith. No further questions. Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2021-42 is our second reading and is binding.
Ordinance granting franchise related to telecommunications system. Ordinance granting a non-exclusive telecommunications or related non-cable franchise to Open Fiber Kentucky Company LLC, a foreign limited liability company, for the use of rights of way for the operation and maintenance of a telecommunications or related non-cable system within the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, and further authorizing the execution of a franchise agreement.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. This was a 5-0 vote. We understood it was a telecommunications agreement, basically for one business. Wasn't much specified beyond that at this moment that we know. Unless there's any further questions, comments. Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2021-43, second reading and is binding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning two tracts of land containing 1.6358 acres from LI Light Industrial to RM4 multifamily residential located at Zero Enterprise Court, presently owned by Wayne and Elva Overhold, with MNMLC as the applicant.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. This was our second reading, it was also a 5-0 vote. Unless there's any further questions or information needed. Okay, roll call, please.
Eastley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2021-44 is our second reading and is binding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 20.45 acres from AG Agriculture and RM3 Townhouse Multifamily Residential to LI Light Industrial located at Zero Kobe Way, and a portion of 263 John D. Jones Road, presently owned by Weston Apartments LLC.
So moved. Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perrigen. This was also an eight vote at the planning zoning and a 5-0 vote for us, unless there's other further questions at this time. Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2021-45, second reading, binding.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number one to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky annual operating budget for fiscal year 2022.
So moved. Second.
Sorry. Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. What was this one, the budget amendment?
13.
Okay, sorry. All right. No further questions. Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. This time, we're going to go into our work session, and we're going to discuss the American Rescue Plan Act, which is ARPA funding. I think we go.